YouTube channel that has been created for the school department.
Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three.
Um, can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Student and staff recognition.
So, good evening, everybody. We're excited to celebrate FFA for their participation in landscape design contest, both at the Biggie E and Washington State Fair. So, Ponigansett FFA participated in the landscape design competition at the Washington County Fair and Eastern States Exposition this past August and September. This year's theme was Down on the Farm. Chapter members decided on a New England farm theme that included apple trees, a small greenhouse, a stone wall, fruiting bushes, various flowers, and many herbs. The design took first place at the Washington County Fair and fourth at Eastern States Exposition. Have you ever, is Eric, have you ever won first place before?
Yeah.
The Biggie? I don't remember that. Alright, I'm gonna call you up. We're gonna give you a certificate and you can go down the school committee row so they can congratulate you, okay? Paige Reynolds? She's not here. Hayden Doyle? Liam Cotter, I saw you. Brooke Zurok? Avery Carlos? Ashley Booker? David Duchesne?
Good job, it was awesome, congratulations.
Congratulations. Morgan Sharet?
Good job, it was awesome, congratulations.
Charlotte Walker?
Congratulations.
Isabella Bick?
It came out awesome, congratulations.
Okay, did I get everybody that's here? I did. And, uh, Wendy Patita, Eric Rittendo. So, did you work all summer? Did you guys work all summer on this stuff?
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much.
Um, you're welcome to stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting, or?
Oh, wait.
Oh, there's more.
Although, Pop Markov didn't make it tonight, she also got such a good sport award for taking a bucket of water on her head last Friday. I'll get this to her.
Thank you. Thank you. So, feel free if you would like to sneak out, feel more than free. Otherwise, you can stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Joy, joy. Congratulations again, guys, great job. It came out awesome.
Number five, approval of meeting minutes, September fifth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the open meeting on September 5th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session meeting on September 5th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
I make a motion to approve the monthly bills dated September 29th, 2023, in the amount of $1,112,985.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, so, yeah, the use of school facility policy for the Gloucester rec adult activities?
Put the, there we go. You are on.
Physical button, that's great. Good evening, nice to see you all. Um, I believe that you should have a memo that was presented to you all in your packets. So, if you'd like to take a look at that, there is some information about our programs, which includes both adult volleyball as well as adult basketball. As we all are aware, we were at this same kind of juncture a few months ago, having discussion about our youth athletics. I would say that the superintendent's office was absolutely wonderful in working through this particular, I don't want to use the word issue because it sounds like conflict, but this particular item, we'll say that. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to go ahead and reach another positive result with regards to adult athletics. I do feel as though it is totally fair for the region to go ahead and look at amending their policies and making certain that the facilities that you all have done a wonderful job taking care of do remain that particular way. However, at this particular time, I'm hoping that we'll be able to find a happy medium, I guess you could say, with regards to this particular year. It's kind of like changing the rules of a board game halfway through the game. So, that way, the other player is, I don't want to say at a disadvantage, but now they've got to play by some new rules. So, I'm optimistic that this particular year, we'll be able to get through it and then we can work through for the following year.
If I could please ask you a question, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
First of all, thank you for all that you do. It's amazing. It's important that the kids and the recreation.
It's not, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for doing that. So, anyway, so the volleyball league, which is what coming forward right now?
Correct.
Um, the custodial fee is $75 an hour.
Mm-hmm.
How long is the volleyball league, the adult volleyball league, in the gymnasium for? An hour, more than an hour?
From what I understand, we're looking at 90 minutes is usually the typical time.
So, about an hour and a half, so?
Yeah, we'll say that.
Event, okay, $75 per event. And how many people would be on the team? So, volleyball is usually like six, so it should be 12 people at least.
Usually, you see somewhere between 12 and 18 individuals attending.
So, if the committee, I'm not speaking for the committee, this is just a question for me.
Yes.
If the committee felt it was realistic to just have you, have them pay the custodial fees, would that be a fair solution for you for this year?
I could under-
So, that's minimal charging?
Well, I understand that. I think that I could understand the custodial fees on an as-need basis. So, if we're talking about the custodians having to set up and take down the volleyball nets, or let's just say they have to go ahead and shoe people out because they're lingering along, then absolutely, like, I feel as though that's a fee that needs to be paid because they're going above and beyond their job. If it's a situation where they don't have to do anything to go ahead and accommodate that particular activity for this year, I feel as though it wouldn't be necessary on a night-in or night-out basis. When doing the math, just for the custodial fees, you're looking at about $4,200 for the entire breadth of adult volleyball, as well as co-ed basketball. And that represents about 15% of my operating budget, which is a pretty significant chunk.
But do, so most, most adults leagues that I have looked into do have a minimum fee?
There has been no minimum fee since-
I don't mean, I don't mean with yours. I'm saying adult, other, other, because I've reached out to other. I don't mean to interrupt you, I do apologize for that, but I meant other communities.
No, and the thing is, I have tried my best to go ahead and uphold those Gloucester traditions that were in place when I came into this position.
Yeah, so I meant other, because when I've reached out to other communities, I discovered that other adult leagues have a fee. Usually, it's about $10 to $20 the fee. So, that's, and sometimes I talked to someone, they were like $30 to $50 per, per person to play. Because if you rent a facility, you pay a fee, so that's, so you, I understand how it was in past practice. I meant, um, if you reached out to other communities, so all the communities did it, but, so if you, if it's just volleyball, and if you have 20 people, so $75 divided by like 20, it's like 375.
And you're right, it doesn't sound bad, but I think the problem is, when there's this expectation that they've been participating in activity for such a long period of time, without having to go ahead and fork over any particular funding, it can be a shock to the system where now it turns from a free-to-play to a pay-to-play. And that's why I'm suggesting that, again, if it's an above and beyond, like, hey, look, you guys just left all that junk lying there, I totally understand that. It's when we're talking about, I think it's that above and beyond effort upon the custodial staff, that I have no problem, you know, taking care of that situation. I think it's if there's no additional, I guess you could say, efforts by the custodial staff just for this particular year, then I feel as though maybe it's not a situation where we need to have that custodial fee. But that's just my perspective, because I think that ultimately, having that open discourse and being able to figure this out outside of always in the public view, would probably be the best means to go ahead and determine how to handle this moving forward.
Thank you for your answers.
Are our custodians here? Is it, do we, Steve, do we?
Our custodians aren't here.
So, it's not like we're calling them in to unlock the doors, or?
No, it is, it is excess cleaning. It is late-night cleaning, that we basically have to readjust our schedules to accommodate all late-night activities that take place. We're overlooking electricity, paper goods, paper towels, toilet paper, water usage. We're overlooking quite a few. We own tier on equipment.
Okay.
Pat Henry.
Pat.
Bob, I have a few questions.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for coming tonight. One question is, are you looking for this sort of flexibility? Because next year, you'll, you'll plan on putting this kind of fee in your budget.
I think that that's what part of the conversation with the school committee or whatever representatives I would be working with would obviously be the, the main focus. So, that way, you could be prepared. So, if the expectation is, at all points when you pass go, you collect $200, then I understand that for the duration of that particular event.
The second point to my question is, if, if I understand recreation for Gloucester community to be, is that we have always tried to offer recreation for all demographics of our community. So, we have free swim at the swim places in the summer. We have tennis for the, you know, eight to 12-year-old. We have all these other programs, and we, and this is all we really have for the parents, for the adults. And so, this is what you, we, we as a community, the Glouce-, I'm speaking for Gloucester, has, has tried to do. At the same time, I think Steve's point is, is well-made tonight about all the other things that go into play. The bathroom use, the this, the soap, the, all of that stuff, it adds up. So, as for, you know, charging you for the thing, we knew when the policy was written, if I understand it right, because you're a Gloucester, you're waived on, but it's the, it's the cleaning section that we're, we're really talking about here, so.
Yes and no. That wasn't necessarily communicated to me earlier on. From what I understood, it was, we were discussing both the rental fee and the cleaning fee. And I think that that's where I felt as though we could potentially find a middle ground with regards to that particular aspect. For me to go ahead and, for adult basketball, as well as adult volleyball, it would cost me $15,000 to go ahead and run the seven-month season that we typically have in years past. And that represents 55% of my operating budget.
The usage fee, okay, so, I, I think I'm talking just like, I mentioned the custodial fee.
The custodial.
Because that's, it is, I mean, we want to take care of our taxpayers, and we, I respect that. But Foster switched, we charge for our school use for the custodial, because the problem is, we're taking our custodians, we end up paying overtime, a lot of times, because they need extra time now, because you're taking them away from cleaning maybe the cafeteria, and now they're cleaning the gymnasium because a group of people just left.
Yes.
So, the problem is, so the regular athletes, the school athletes, are done by usually 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock the latest. So, now, if we, school, I mean, I don't think high school athletes are in there past 9:00. They, they can't be. So, anyway.
Are the custodial fees automatically charged, or is it deemed like, if nothing needed to be done, then it's not charged?
But you can't have, there's always something, because there's still electrical use, there, you're still, they still have to be swept. They still, that's why Foster, we said, because the custodians were being taken from their other jobs, they're now being put to do additional work, so like I said, we ended up, we ended up paying overtime. I'm sorry, Mark.
No, it's good. I would say, that's why, when we amended the policy, it was to focus on youth activities being free.
Exactly.
And we did not, we did not consider this, so I'm okay with the compromise of not paying the rental, but still paying the custodial fees.
And you know, Bob, if you needed to, maybe, I mean, in a real life, you collect three or four bucks from every person every time they show up, and, and it's just, this is for cleaning of the facility. I, I don't think that that's unreasonable.
I can understand that point. And then I think that it isn't necessarily unreasonable then, when the expectation is that certain region programs are utilizing Gloucester facilities, that there has to be a fee associated with that well to maintain the grass and empty the trash. And I think that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I'm not saying this as a threat, I think it's just a, it's a, something that I feel as though we have went ahead and we've put our, I guess you could say, efforts to go ahead and facilitate for some of the region sports. And if that's the stance that the region wants to take, that we're gonna go that particular route, that's totally fine. Then I think that we'll have to relook at what we're doing as well for our facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Yes. Alright, so, do we wanna just, I make, alright, so I'll just, I'll make a motion to waive rental usage, the usage rental of the facilities for adult Gloucester sports leagues, however, keep the custodial fees in place.
I just wanted to make a question.
Absolutely.
Should we be saying that we're waiving the rental, because I thought the policy, it was-
No, we only made it for youth-related activities, not adults.
Excuse me, okay. Would you like, would you like the, to be worded differently?
No.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Uh, Shelley, is your intent to waive that for one year, so that they have an opportunity to revisit as part of the next budget cycle?
I think that's the committee's decision. Um, that can be for this year. How does the committee feel? It can be for, oh, do you want to make it?
Let's do year to year.
If there was no need, so say we say, oh, we didn't need to, need for outdoor sports, I don't know, something else.
I agree, one year.
I, I think the one year is a nice number, because it also gives them an opportunity to come back with what the actual realized values are, and perhaps what our expenses are on the backside of that. And it would be a more informed conversation.
I appreciate that, friend, for the clarification.
Is, is there a compromise? I was just thinking, how many times do you use the, does it, is it twice a week?
So, it's twice a week if you're, is it, is it 56 days altogether?
It's 56 days between volleyball as well as the basketball. So, for, and again, 56 days doesn't necessarily mean that we're looking at every single Monday or Tuesday for the year, because there might be a holiday, or there might be a this, so that's the high end. So, it would be, for the two of them, $4,200 for 56 days.
Is it usually once or twice a week?
It's once a week for basketball and once a week for volleyball, correct.
I was just thinking, maybe if it were twice a week, we'd charge him once, you know what I mean? Like, ease him in this year because it wasn't in his budget, and then?
Uh, they operate on the same schedule in terms of October to April, but one happens to play on Tuesday where the other one is on a Monday.
I also do like the idea of like having, like hashing this out more in like a meeting. Because I think he, he did reference, you know, the usage of the recreation, of the region using theirs. I, I think maybe having a more clear depiction of what we're using of theirs and what they're using of ours make, make more sense to do.
Just comment on, on, on one thing, and I thank you for, for coming and presenting, and I appreciate the, us working together earlier in, in, in the spring. We do share the facilities, especially in the spring season, and we, we pay $150 for one portageon. That's what the region contributes to, to that. So, I think you, I, I like what you're saying, that I think you, you probably want to talk through what the use is and what, if, if you're going to do for every session of 75. I know I don't have a vote on that, but I just wanted to share that, that we pay 150, I think it was 150 or 175 for a portageon during the spring season when we share it for.
For baseball.
Yeah, so an additional john is brought into LaShia Field, and the region has paid for that in addition to the john that we have there on a regular basis, correct?
So, I have a question. So, do you use outdoor facilities at all at the region?
Not currently, except for in youth athletics situations, correct?
Okay, so you felt, but no adult athletics use outdoor facilities?
No. We've tried in the years past, it just never hooks.
Never works out, yeah.
We tried, we just, again, when it's me and one other person, I don't know if that necessarily is a success. I call that a pretty epic fail.
The problem is, is just, is the indoor, is the indoor.
Which I understand.
That's, to me, that's the problem. If it's outdoors, it's one thing, you're not, no one's locking up after you.
Correct.
No one's saying, okay, you gotta go now, so I can finish up and clean up in here. That's what I see. It's not, it's an hour and a half, and it's per, so it's per, so if it's 20. So, say, they do basketball, if they can get a basketball and volleyball in like the same night. I mean, they could do it that way, if they can get a night when no one's in there, I don't know if that ever happens.
We'll use your auxiliary gym, right? Is that a possibility? They could use both gyms?
Uh, if it's available, and then, I guess on top of that, it's, if they're cleaning two separate facilities, does that affect it?
No, that's what I think we're saying, per event.
I completely understand, yeah. And I, I think that's a wonderful idea to go ahead and look at something like that.
So, if we could try, I mean, I think we're trying to be compassionate to your situation, but on the same hand, we're trying, we understand, um, to the employees, how difficult it is to try to get all their regular job done, and then to throw extra in the mix.
Nope, I can completely understand that.
I think we're hurting right now with custodians too, so they're already stretched very thin. But that's not your problem, that's us problem.
It's okay, it's a town problem.
Yeah.
I, I just don't see it as unreasonable to, if every time you come, you put in five bucks to come, like, it's, everywhere you go, if you're in a volleyball league at one of Gators or anyplace else, you're forking over a lot of money.
Which I can understand completely. I think that the other thing that you have to consider is, if you're going to one of those private settings, it's a league where people are enroll, are paying to play, there's specific officials there that they're compensating. There's also probably some sort of like trophy or awards.
But just even the summer basketball leagues, like, they play in the situet, um, outdoor.
And, yeah, and it's the same thing, where there's, there's officials, and there's different expenses that are incurred. I think the only thing that I'm trying to express is that this has always been a, a drop in, like, you know what? I'm gonna go play volleyball today, or I'm gonna go play some buckets today. It's never been a, a very formalized situation where you have.
Do you really think the people that drop in, like, Kyle, what are you doing tonight? Let's go play basketball, like, okay, here's my five bucks. I don't see it as like a huge deal.
I can understand that, but when I think you're talking about, again, it's, it's been a tradition that I have seen since I came in, and not necessarily being a Gloucester resident, one of the things that has been impressed upon me to the nth degree with all activities that I've engaged in, is that, you know, we hold traditions true in this particular town. And I'm trying my best to be, come, you know, assimilated to that idea. So, I, I'd really hate to go ahead and kind of spring it on people at this particular point. Moving forward, when we know what the expectation is, I 100% can say, listen, we have to keep up with the Joneses. We have to go ahead and adjust and change and modify. But it's a little bit difficult when, again, you're, you're moving the goalposts as we're making our way down the field.
I think maybe we could, maybe the two, maybe you could look at the calendar. Maybe we could condense the days, and by, if you, could you utilize both gyms for one fee?
Now, it, it definitely is something that is a, a good idea to go ahead and look at. That would be a wonderful thing if we could make that work.
And then, all due respect, this policy was approved at what meeting? Was it approved a while ago? So, you kind of had a heads up?
It was.
That it was for youth, that we, that there was no fee for youth? Because we kind of figured adults have a job, adults can pay for it.
Yep.
They want to do something, say, going to the gym, or going to something else. My stepson does field hockey, and he pays about $200, and it's, but there's no refs, there's no officials. So, just onto, on the other side, because you said that that's official, there's, it's not. They do it for fun. So, there are other communities that do charge a significant fee?
Mm-hmm, yep, and which I can, again, I can completely understand. It's just, when we go ahead and we make changes mid-budget cycle, then it just becomes difficult, because I'd rather take on the cost myself. I don't want to have to pass it on to those people that are coming and enjoying this particular activity. So, if I can go ahead and absorb it and cut costs somewhere else, I'd love to have the opportunity to do stuff like that.
I respect that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. No? Any other discussion? If you want to speak, come sign in. There is a motion.
There was a motion, and there's a second.
Um, one of the things that seems to work well when you're doing like a loosely organized thing is like maybe, Bob, if you had a bucket, and, and people who drop in can drop, drop it in the bucket, and you could, you could just agree to accept whatever was raised for this year. I, if you're saying it's just three bucks, why, if you could raise more than $75 in a night, wouldn't you want to do that?
But what if you only get $5 for the night, and no one drops anything in?
Well, I mean, that's the risk that you take, but.
That's not, yeah, so, that would be like telling the custodians that they, they're sorry, that you're not getting paid.
No, yeah, well, he has, they, we, he could have his donation bucket and put that into, add, just add that to his budget.
It was just an idea. Um, I, I would just say that I hope the exception passes, and I, I, I agree with the mid-budget cycle. As a Gloucester resident, either, either it's gonna come out of a town budget, or it's gonna come out of the region's budget. Either way, it's coming out of my pocket, and I don't think it matters. So, I'd rather see some cooperation, at least for this year. This policy was passed in June, and in mid-budget cycle, I think it's not fair. Thanks.
Is there any other, Amy? Any other discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Try to work out that calendar.
Thank you.
Approval of cell tower funds will start with PH Chorus.
Um, so, hold on, I'm sorry.
Letter E, A. Anyone?
Wait a minute. Um, it says music department, is that music department?
A motion to approve cell tower funds in the amount of $16,600 for the PH Chorus trip to the Festival of Music.
Okay, I have a problem with this. Unfortunately, this, what we're doing is unsustainable. We have already given the music department 20, I passed it, hold on. The, so I don't know if anybody read the backup information. The cell tower funds bring in $1,750 a month, which is 20, um, which is 21,000 a year. The music department alone this year, we have given $22,974.11. This is unsustainable. I appreciate all that's happening and what they're doing, but we could ask the parents for a donation, so if there's 100 kids don't, participating, we could ask the parents to donate $160. That is not illegal. But, um, we are, this is not sustainable. I cannot keep doing this. I'm sorry.
So, here, go ahead, hi Beth.
This came up the la, I don't know whether it was in May or whenever it was, this came up at the meeting, because we all said the same thing. I thought we were gonna have the-
Create a policy.
Yeah.
And he needs to go back to policy. This needs, this is, like I said, we've already given this one organization $22,000, which is more than we bring in a year.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think anybody, including Derek, is gonna disagree with us. I mean.
It's unsustainable.
We can't.
Yeah, I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything wrong with what they're requesting. I think it's that, the only reason we're, the only reason we have the means to pass it, if we wanted to tonight, is because we have a built-up balance. If it wasn't, if it wasn't for the built-up balance, we would have already spent twice what we bring in, in revenue. I mean, if you made 21,000 a year, you wouldn't spend 53,000, you'd be in debt.
I think you want to distribute it.
Evenly, fairly.
Right, exactly.
I think you also have to consider the number of students it's affecting. So, rather than spread it evenly amongst organizations, where music might have a larger number of students. Right, so maybe when we think about this policy, we think about a price per pupil, rather than each organization getting a set amount.
Impact.
Yeah, because it could impact greater, a greater number of students.
I was also thinking, like, the request up to 50%, but with a cap, too, because if it's a $100,000 trip, it just- I was also thinking, like, the request up to fifty percent, but with a cap, too, because if it's a hundred thousand dollar trip, just as an example, right? Fifty percent is fifty thousand, but like, there could still be a cap somewhere that would protect us, just, but I like your idea, too.
So, may I please ask the attorney for, Marianne, is it true, so I know the state, this was very contentious, that you couldn't ask parents to pay for field trips, but you can ask them to make a donation?
Yes, so, we always used to charge, and, and if a child couldn't afford it, they.
We're being recorded.
We always used to charge for field trips, and if a child couldn't go on a field trip, then, if they couldn't afford it, they didn't go. We did try to do some fundraising, but if a parent couldn't afford something, the kid, the child didn't go. And then several years ago, the law changed, the General Assembly, that, that you had to come up with the money through your school budget to pay for field trips. You couldn't even ask for donations from parents. So then that became a problem, because a lot of field trips got canceled. For example, the trip to Washington DC for eighth graders around the state, and things like that, that got canceled. So then the General Assembly redid the bill, and now you can't ask, like, you can't tell a parent, in order for your child to go, you have to pay a thousand dollars, but you can ask a parent for a donation.
So that's what I'm saying, like, that's, they could ask for a donation for a hundred and sixty dollars, or even a hundred dollars, and then they come back.
So I, so I think there's just, and I know that Mr. Sabatini is here, but just some, some clarification. I understand what you're saying about the, the amount that we take in per year, and we don't want to go past that, but there was three, there were three years that you didn't spend anything. And I think in all fairness, this is a, we, we have teachers who are willing to offer these opportunities to our kids, that other schools don't get, and it's not like teachers across the state are lining up and saying, I want to go on these trips. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into it, and our students benefit. They're a personal, um, there's a lot that they benefit from. It's not just going and watching a movie or something. Uh, it, it's to improve their performance. I think the other part of it, this is, this is a trip that costs a lot of money, you can see the cost there. Transportation is a huge part of, of our trips now. Um, you know that we've discussed transportation and the increase in cost. And this is not, they're not asking you to fund this one hundred percent. Parents will be expected to contribute, and they do support this as well, and, um, I don't know if you want to hear from Mr. Sabatini, but you can see the total cost, and the matching funds that they're requesting. It's because the parents will contribute, and there will be, the parent, Music Association, very active in this. I just think it's a great opportunity for our kids, and because you don't have a policy right now that limits how much teachers can ask, I think you should, you should consider approving this one, and then moving forward with it. I think it's a really valuable opportunity, and our teachers are willing to, to have our students participate in this.
Can I ask, ask a question? When is this event? When is this, when is this field trip? Okay, so if we did deny it tonight, just hypothetically speaking, and if you got money from parents, if you asked for donations from parents, we have time to reconvene and to readdress this. I just, do you understand what I'm saying? We've already given the music department more money than we've taken in this year. So that's my huge concern.
I know, sorry. Do you, do you need to know now?
And there is, families are.
Families do donate, they are expected to, yes. Is that on top of the grant?
On top of the grant.
How many days is this?
It's, um, Friday through Sunday. Uh, Friday and Monday, sorry.
So I kind of, I'm just, I, so if we do this tonight, you're not going to, I'm gonna strongly recommend that you do not ask for additional funding for a play, for a musical, or anything else, because that's gonna bring you up over like thirty-eight thousand dollars that you've gotten this year. I'm just making a suggestion, you could do whatever you want, I'm just. It doesn't, but it's still the music department.
No, it is not, it's separate.
This says music, well, everything says music department.
There's music, there's drama, there's, there's. The play is totally different.
It says, what I'm just saying, it says music, it says music trip.
We're doing another play this year?
Music trip, and music, so it's under musical, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, it's just separate, though, the play is completely.
Yeah, that's.
That's, yeah, but you shouldn't be penalized because you take on more than one job.
I would just like to say one thing, is that in my thirty-some years of being a resident of Gloucester, I think the one thing that has always stood out is that Pontiac Yonset is known for its music program and its arts. And so I think we need to consider that. It, it's sort of the one thing that we stand out in. And so I don't, I don't want to, to miss that.
Beth? I know, Derek, I don't want you to think that we're not supporting you. We act, because you do a phenomenal job, everybody does, and, and I love, and Ian, you always go to these things and come back top dogs.
It's unsustainable.
But we were just, we've talked about this, and I don't know if it was you, but at some point, we need to look at the policies, so we don't run out of money, or we have money to give.
Yes, thank you, Beth. I, I am not trying to be disrespectful at all, please know that. I just, I want this to be a sustainable program for the students moving forward. And if we, if we're giving out two years' worth of cell tower funds, then we're going to deplete this fund very, very quickly. So, I appreciate all that you do and all your efforts, and you, the, the music department is an amazing department, and thank you for all you do. I just, please understand, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, and I'm sorry if I came across that way. Okay.
Can I add just one more piece to it, just so you understand, the, the, the cost that Derek is asking for really just covers transportation there. It doesn't cover the admission to the festival, it doesn't cover the rooms, it doesn't cover anything else. It's really, transportation is about sixteen thousand dollars. And that's essentially what it comes down to, it's to get our students there and the families. So just to give you that other piece of, of information.
Thank you, Derek.
Derek, is, is there any grant money that's floating out there?
Not for this type of.
It says, oh, I thought you received some grant money.
It said, yeah, it said grant, it said the grant, it did, it said.
Runs from this grant, oh, no, no, runs from this grant, this particular.
Oh, they're calling this the cell tower, the grant. That's what I misunderstood, I thought you were getting grant, I.
I'm just wondering if maybe, you know, you, if you have looked into those opportunities, where there might be some grant money out there for the arts, or whatever. It's just a suggestion to help defer your costs.
Not for travel specifically.
Not for travel, but. Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
No, you made a motion, well, can you remake it? There was no second.
Second.
Who's seconding? My motion?
Beth.
Beth? Any other discussion?
I just have one other question. Have you, is the transportation, what, what is the time-sensitive piece that you need to know today? And the transportation is busing? Okay, and is there, has there been other modes of transportation looked at to be the most cost-effective option? Okay, just curious, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Nine, nine zero. Have fun. Letter, letter B. Support the nine eleven museum and memorial lesson and field trip.
So if I couldn't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be such a negative person tonight, but this, it says in here fifty percent of the funds, and this is not fifty percent of the funds. This is more than fifty percent. Fifty percent of the funds is nine thousand four hundred and six dollars. So this is six hundred dollars more than fifty percent. So if we approve it, we could approve it for the nine thousand four hundred, but I'm sorry, I'm going by the policy, what it says. That's just me.
When are, does anybody know when they're planning on going?
Uh, they're looking to plan, I believe, November, before the holidays.
I also just have one quick question. Um, I believe, what was it, last year, um, for the nine eleven museum field trip was five thousand that we approved last time. I just want to find out why the doubling cost about compared to, is this the same trip?
It's the same trip, we had more money in the budget, in the social studies budget to cover it.
Oh, last year you did?
Yes.
That is not there this year?
Right.
Okay.
Well, you know, just because they're asking for X, doesn't mean we have to give them the total. We could give them.
The, the half.
Yeah, give them five thousand or something, I mean, give them something. But, you know, as to everyone's point, the cell, self, I mean, the funds are depleting quickly.
No, I was just curious about why, you know, five thousand, and then all of a sudden it just doubled now to ten, when it's, again, like what Shelley pointed out, was that it's not even half of what they, what they said in here, that.
There also, there also was an increase in transportation from last year to this year, and we had budgeted the year before. So the increase in transportation, I think we're at about the same number of students we offer it, because it's tied to the curriculum to all students in, in tenth grade.
Do you know how many students it, are able to participate in this?
It's over two hundred.
Oh, good. But, uh, so I'm just, according to the policy, it says, how to provide matching funds of fifty percent of the cost, so that's per the policy. So I make a motion to approve nine thousand four hundred and six dollars to Christopher Stanley and Roger Foran for the nine eleven museum memorial lesson and field trip.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. All right, one more. I'm not making this motion.
Move to approve the cell tower funds in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars to offset travel costs to and from wrestling tournaments.
Any discussion?
This is not in, so tournaments are not part of, you, then you have to talk into the mic. Tournaments are not part of the athletic department budget? But not the transportation?
Nope, it's not any transportation, so our parents drop in. It's, um, basically, when we get there, it's usually two or three days, we only pay for the student's portion of the stay. So if it's a hundred and fifty dollars a night for a room, those costs vary, it's the same amount that we asked for last year. And there's a, the mother is with the sons, and for instance, we pay half for the wrestler to attend, and then the mother kicks in the other half. So last year we asked for thirty-five hundred, we're asking for eighty-five hundred. We're asking for the same amount this year. If we go over again, we'll ask for additional monies from our parents. And the purpose of this is, um, this is just because of the success of our team, and so we get invited to these invitationals. These are the premier tournaments in the country, and really what it does, I mean, it's not about going, going to those tournaments for that reason. What it does is it allows our kids to be.
Exposure.
Yeah, and so, we have seven kids currently in Division One, five run Ivy League schools, and nine of them are in college total, and they've actually secured more than two million dollars.
And scholarships, that's amazing.
So that's the purpose of it, we asked for the same amount. We already know that if, I went to that thing, and Beth brought this up when I first asked, that she was concerned years ago, that if this keeps occurring, we're gonna run out of money, and so we're anticipating not having that.
Thank you for the excellent, for the clarification. So I make, you already made a motion, right?
Correct.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all abstained.
I have a question. Are we moving on from cell phone, any cell phone tower expenditures right now? Are, are we done with it?
Yes.
So I had a question about something, and I don't know if I'm out of order here or not, about an approval on a cell phone tower that we did a few months ago. And I just wanted to clean it up.
I think we did. Remember, is that's what we talked about?
Yeah.
On the phone? I think it was cleaned up, at the time.
Oh.
Am I right?
So we don't need to remake a motion and do a different motion to approve?
No, because it wasn't, it was the conflict of interest.
Yeah, the T-shirts. I thought we already cleaned that up.
I just wanted to protect a school committee member, basically.
Yeah, because when you mentioned it to me, I meant it to them, and I think it was already taken.
It's also, it was, she, there was a conversation, correct?
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Um, number nine, Director of Finance Report Budget, oh, well. Remind me future agenda items that will put that.
Will not be a future agenda.
No, but just policy.
Yep.
For the cell tower. Director of Finance Report Budget and Finance.
Unfortunately, I don't have any update on the operational review report. We've been diligently working on preparing things for the audit, and, um, beginning the budget preparations, so that's, that's taken a lot of our focus.
When do you think the audit's going to begin? When will you be ready for the audit?
Um, the hope is to have them on site mid-October.
Beautiful, amazing, thank you.
But they've already been here once already, I mean, you did book them, I think, the second week of school to start the preliminary. They did, yes. They were here for the preliminary testing, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, sorry. Superintendent's report. It's number ten in your packet. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, so if you don't have any specific questions, just something to, to add, you'll notice, um, that we are also, um, looking at replacing, uh, we had our human resource manager resign in August, so I've worked with the business manager, I worked with Amanda, and we identified what the responsibilities are, so it's, it's a different position. Uh, it's more, not a manager's position, more a generalist, so I did put that job description in there. Um, and I also just wanted to update you that Dave and I are working on the website, um, for us to have access to all of our curriculum. So it'll be in a nice, clean space for people to access, uh, scope and sequence, and then for our purchase curriculum, there'll be a link to the website. So we've been working, working on that.
Thank you.
And I think that's.
Thank you.
That's it for my report.
Any questions? Approval of virtual instruction day plan per ride.
Move to approve the virtual instruction day plan per ride.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Athletic update.
Yeah, so, um, athletics is well underway. The fall season is halfway done. We have homecoming coming up. I want to just thank Steve and Dave over here, because they helped me out very much. When I, when I got on board, I wasn't on board, and the timing was a little bit difficult. And it was the very be, beginning of school, and they were running around like crazy, trying to get everything situated, and they stopped everything they were doing to help me out and make athletics run efficiently. In addition, um, I have a great secretary, who is a part-time secretary, but she's working, uh, full-time and overtime hours, um, to make sure everything is smooth when I'm in the classroom, because I'm still in the classroom, and so, we're well underway with the winter season. So we have all the coaches we just advertised, and we'll be doing interviews very soon. And outside of, uh, extreme heat, a tornado, flooding, and poisonous mosquitoes, we're doing great. Just waiting for, uh, some locusts, a wave of locusts to come through, and I think that'll complete the season. But, but speaking of the triple E, I did, um, have some inquiries from the news and, um, various parents that were concerned, and, um, what we did was, we did smart scheduling, which we didn't have to do, but it was recommended by DEM. So we moved as many of the events up, um, before sunset as we could. It's getting harder to do that now. And then we also moved a lot of our events offsite, and so we flip-flopped. So if we were supposed to be playing North Providence home, we then played at North Providence, and now we're gonna have a bunch of people appearing here in the fall on a regular basis, and it's getting crowded, but we're gonna get it all in. Any questions? Or concerns? Well, thank you for the opportunity, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Capital Projects update.
So Capital Projects update, uh, we successfully submitted our five-year, uh, Capital Projects plan to Ride. Uh, so we're gonna have a follow-up capital team, Capital Projects team meeting on October seventeenth for, uh, you know, follow-up discussion. Our safety and security assessment has been completed. We're just waiting on a final draft, uh, which should be available before our October seventeenth, uh, meeting. The well pump house project is basically eighty percent complete. All the water components are in place. Uh, basically, some DEM permitting held up, some minor drainage issues, and some tree removal, that's all we're waiting for on that. The dust collection project was awarded for our construction and manufacturing, so that is scheduled and slated to begin over the three-week Christmas break. I keep saying three weeks, because basically we're gonna start the week before Christmas break, the Christmas vacation week, and then the following week. So it's ultimately given us three weeks to complete the project. And our inside-out, um, grants, all the drawings have been completed by Aronian and Associates. Again, we'll review all these on October seventeenth with our Capital Projects team, and things are moving in the right direction.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for him before he disappears? Were you driving at five AM this morning, like a crazy man, down Sawmill?
Potentially. I'm usually here very early.
Do we have a question for him? Beth?
So, we had an assembly at the middle school patch. Mark, unfortunately, can't be here. The sound system is... The sound system isn't so good. At, in their gym, there's no place they can gather. So I don't know what it costs and I don't know if it's even yours or Dave's, but...
This is something that Dave and I can look into and weigh options and see what existing equipment we have and see what we can do. We're just on portable equipment, correct? So we can look into it and get some value to it.
Approval of the resolution regarding world language. It's in your packet, number fourteen.
Move to approve the resolution regarding world language as presented.
Second.
Pass it to, sorry?
Give it to Pat. It was her.
Yep.
So that was Aaron.
The only thing, the only thing I would ask about this, I... Thank you, I'm glad we have it here in front of us, but I just wondered if now we could then possibly, I don't know who would do this, but see if we can get some other communities to onboard with us so that we have some strength.
I think that's what we do.
So normally what happens is once you pass it, then Kyle will send it out to other school committees around the state saying that Gloucester Gloucester just passed this and is there any interest in those communities and...
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Policy subcommittee update.
We're going to vote on that, though.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Nine zero, thank you, Shelley. Policy subcommittee update.
I make a motion to approve the WIS policy as a second reading as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Public comment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, communication to and from members of the school committee?
Are we doing, are we doing agenda items?
I don't know if this is an appropriate time, but I just wanted to ask that we make sure the cellphone tower policy is on for the seventeenth meeting. Thank you.
Okay, now you.
Yeah, the meeting, the policy subcommittee meeting.
I'll put it in writing for the future agenda items.
That's what I asked.
And if anybody, yeah, so far as communication, if anybody, just so that way there's no misunderstanding, if we could have any committee member that wants anything, to please text it or email to the committee, to the, to the chairs.
All fut, what she's trying to say is all future agenda item requests be made via email primarily or text so that we have it in writing and we don't misconstrue what you're hoping to accomplish by having it put on the agenda.
So we're not going to ask for agenda items at a meeting anymore?
We want it in writing.
You want it in writing?
Yeah.
I just have a question about that. I'm sorry. So is, is that, I'm just wondering, by not publicly saying what agenda items we want, is that violating open meetings?
No, it doesn't have to be public because when you get home and something crosses your mind and you think, oh, it doesn't not go on because you thought of it after the fact.
I actually pulled up, I'm sorry, Cindy, I pulled up three random agendas. It was Situate, South Kingston and Coventry. And they did not have future agenda items, because I was curious.
Because if it comes to you tomorrow after you slept on something and you think to have it put on, it never had to be said and open. And, and there's been so much misunderstanding between us and what people want on the agenda. I prefer it to be in writing so that I don't misunderstand and misrepresent what you're hoping to see on the agenda. And I don't want to mess up creating the agenda.
And when I went to a chair meeting and I asked other school committee chairs, I asked how they, if they, how they handle future agenda items and they said exactly that. Because it's easy to misunderstand what someone wants. Because Kyle's taking notes and you can go back. And sometimes it's hard to really understand what people want so they don't have future agenda items as a public session. They, they ask for it all to be in writing.
And then it gets posted anyway.
And I, I do like the idea of them being vetted by the attorney, too, to make sure that they're necessary and required. And I think that written piece has been helpful. I know some of the stuff that I throw out there is not legal, apparently. And Mary Ann's quick to point that out. So it's nice when the good ones get referred either here to the policy committee or some other committees. So I think that written piece is, is helpful there.
It is helpful to me, at least. Any other communication to and from members of the school committee, from anybody else? Okay, then.
I make a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to reconvene to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Yeah, you guys can all go hurt from not moving. Can we shut the, is the, oh, am I unplugged?